Right, we got everybody here, so we got our quorum. Regular agenda items, I didn't hear any changes this evening, so see if anybody's got any changes last minute, I'm not aware of.
I can make a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Okay, you want me to make some motion, can I get a second?
All seconds.
Stephanie does a second, right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, any questions on the consent agenda? It's not, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as is. Make that motion, yeah, Steph makes a motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Okay, Stephanie does a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, okay, approval of council minutes from the last meeting. Any changes, corrections, additions to that?
I'll make a motion to accept as presented.
Yeah, Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, public comment, anybody got anything they want to talk about tonight? Going once, going twice? Okay, along with sheriff's report, who's got that one tonight? You gotta talk to your boss about that. Ouch, okay.
Great.
Okay.
This is, I got two reports here, they're both for the month of January, this is the whole salary report, well, as done going through the 257 calls for last month. In order for me to get all this data, I really have to read through, that Murray has to read through every call to see whether they got a warning a site on a traffic stop. Do a little tally sheet, and then I got to thinking, I'm like, we have this wonderful guy Brandon Johnson at the office who does our yearly reports and is really good at data and everything. So I asked him if he could put together a report for us, and he's like, absolutely, it's really easy, and I think it looks wonderful and has a lot of great information, so the city council, like I said, it would be much easier for both of us if that's not in three hours, doing tallies.
I'm game.
He can do this.
It looks great.
So we'll go through that, I'll pull up my old report here if I can find it, just kinda trying to get my computer to stay alive. So I didn't give my little writings transposed onto the new report, it's so I'll just read off the old one here, this month there was 214 calls for service, not the link, the link check, so a few times in several papers. Increased traffic enforcement, which is a lot of where those 214, we have explained the last BUI show. That's also one reason we see the large discrepancy with warnings to sites, I can't speak for all the people I know when I'm on like a seatbelt shift or a DUI shift. If I'm stopping for sweet or something like that, and not intoxicated, that's what I'm looking for, a lot of those people get warnings, so it does, on those saturation periods, if you're trying to get a little more warning, you have these ones with warning on the side. So that increased traffic enforcement was provided throughout the county, each county provided for seatbelt and impaired driving saturations. With increased traffic enforcement, there were two, according to Brandon's data, three, so that's the other thing that he's aware of that I'm relying on. Going through every call, or the discrepancy, three, I would say DUI, rest in the police area for the month. One crash that occurred on the 10081 was also color related, it was over at 81-112 Avenue, but it still pulls up as a horse address, I just count everything that pulls up for us. That one was handled by the Lawrence, but I had told this because due to the series of arrests, anything as well as we have them. It's called that, you know, but overall, it's a successful saturation period, demonstrated that a vast majority of our horse residents drive sober and wear their seatbelts. I just sent for all this sheriff's office, we thank everybody for doing that. I need to go back to the new one, and then scroll through, so it depends, yeah. And it's more professional, definitely. A lot of, a lot of, you can include more info if you want, less info if you want. What that is there, is those are, where calls that generate the report, because a vast majority of our calls don't generate reports, they can be comments added to the call. And clear what we call action complete, otherwise the ones where they require some type of report, either from an arrest or fraud call, somebody had some money spent on them or whatever, that could be just a report that's sent out to the state attorney for consideration of charges, or we need to get sound of our investigation for following. So those are all the different types of calls for the month of January that generate. That's just a heat map of part of all those calls he has listed where they higher volume areas, so you can see in front of the elementary school, maybe there's a, we're even trying some extra traffic enforcement there, so actually extra red blob right in front of the elementary school. We have some, but the city hall, so a lot of times if we get a general public assist call in Forest, we'll just use the city hall, I guess, generate a call for it.
This is quite an uptick in January.
It is, but if you notice how many warnings are in.
I do see that.
Yeah, it was, it was very traffic, it was a very heavy, I mean, traffic heavy month, so we had, and it's not just the Forest area, except for the mall. Cast County, because we did have those extra federal funds for the way with the seatbelts, and right after the seatbelt saturation ended, it went right into the UI, etc. Otherwise, if you look at the base calls, the meat and potatoes, I didn't see anything concerning when I was looking through.
What's the offensive contact, does that mean they broke a, a, like restraining order? The top, the, yeah. So they didn't break a restraining order, it just happened, like, I got confused by the offensive contact, I didn't know if they meant, if that meant they broke a restraining order, so, okay.
That's to do with like the national base reporting, how they report stuff.
Okay.
So it's, because there's certain things we have to report that actually goes to the FBI, but they're data tracking, and a lot of it's the way they have it for.
I don't, I don't like to see the, the violent crimes, kind of a I said seeing a violent crime, I, I don't recall seeing a lot of violent crime in Forest, so that's a little concerning.
Well, and I don't know the circumstances on that one, I saw the call, and if I go to follow up, an investigator just generated, so they were looking into something.
Okay.
So. But you do get a little more, so this might, there might have been those calls before, and just information we have to look at, we haven't seen a lot, that's why I'm saying these are like, they're gonna gain a lot more in both of these.
Yeah.
The calls change from how they come in versus how they're reported, so sometimes someone could call in as like a domestic, and people will up there and we talk to everybody, and it was just a screaming match or something like that. We can clear the call out, actually complete, it stays in the system as a domestic. So it's sort of based towards, you read the comments, you don't really know what the call was, so that can, that can affect this type of graphing system too.
Okay.
So it just depends on, on what happened when you were there, you know, and if it's actually, just because it's domestic doesn't mean someone got charged for domestic, it's just, it's a case by case.
Right.
And, yeah, I mean, a verbal disagreement doesn't fall under what's essentially called a domestic, but again, dispatch has limited things that they can send them out, so they go by the best one they can think of at the time.
Yeah.
So we do, I mean, I do, first we try to change them, if I get there, it doesn't fit, this one might get better, I can do that, but that's how it's happened.
Okay.
Okay, can you Bill?
If anybody ever has questions on, I did look at that one, and I just, I don't have more info, and it's more than likely an ongoing investigation, so I'm trying to feel like I get more info.
That's okay, I just, it just took me a little bit by surprise.
Yeah. It's a vast thing, but what you think the worst of it, and it could be on kid at school, mom or dad wanna, doing something when you're at high school, it's, I just, I don't know if she wants.
Okay.
Certainly looking at anything if you ever, I just don't have a high, right? At the right now.
Okay, you Bill's got any questions? Yeah, appreciate that, yeah, I like the new format, let's keep rolling with that one.
Yeah, it takes
That way you don't have to monkey with it, right? Yeah.
I like what's going on in my
Yep, no.
Yeah, that works for everybody, that'll save a lot of, I think it's more info.
Yeah, it's more info too, I mean, it's, it's good information to have.
Yeah.
And I did send out the yearly one.
Yeah.
I don't know if I got it, it doesn't look like it, so maybe we can just find out the next one.
That'd be fine, yeah, we'll go through it then.
Does that one have a heat map too? That's the best part of that.
I think I have a few.
Yeah.
And not the master, I guess, should utilize made the exact decision today at home, and kind of last minute, but you got it done.
Yeah, no, it's good, I like it.
You got that or anyone?
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, Brenton, you got the next one.
Hey, that's just a follow up from last council meetings, discussing the president, we also urgently identified that discussion be brought back the first week in July. Kids realize that July, the first week in July is July 3rd, and July 4th will be that Tuesday afterwards, so we're asking council to move that to June 19th. So their date, we go a little, that would be up to the city council, decide if we want to move it or keep it that day.
I think we should back it up, because the third people are gonna be out of town, that might want to be involved in this, so I think we should back it up, the 19th. Yeah, question, go ahead.
Gentlemen, back here was asking you to speak up, there'll be a threat to you too, just so, yeah.
Okay, raise a hand, and so I can see, who is it? Okay, you had a question?
No, we just couldn't hear.
Okay, couldn't hear, sorry, um, that's, I was just thinking, we move it to June 19th unless you guys have.
Good to look at, funny, but.
As long as they let the, the people know that there's
We would, we would let the HBA, the elder association know, and
Okay, so we want to make a motion, we switch it, we did a vote on it last time, let's make a vote and switch it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second? Sarah does a second, okay, all in favor say aye. Motion carries, okay, Jimmy, you got the next one?
And then by way, so Mike first, our office been handling the way as far as reaching out to the affected property, meeting with the property owners, and gathering feedbacks and feedback and comments from them, to date, all those present tickets have been delivered. One of them, a little bit to get delivered over internal, internal area, that one was delivered like last week, I believe. Communications been had with all but one known landowner, we've received three letters. Of, that were in favor, we see 15 letters that have this, request additional information. We have letters from about eight landowners that are pending, so a lot of it just gets to be discussion about compensation for trees and fences and other things that are along that, along that corridor, so would touch base a little bit on this forward.
Yeah, so obviously just to give the extent of the, the feedback that city has gotten, obviously additional conversations need to take place before the city kind of proceeds with this one. I think there were more requests for discussion on trees than I was expecting, and so I think that it should be beneficial to see kind of hold up on anything further until we can have a little discussion, but it's actually, see where that, as far as value in trees, and then provide you guys with the recommendation on how to proceed from there, but additional conversation needs to take place, at least the property owners are having those conversations with the city now, we just need to keep on, I think, the city, where are the two sides at?
Do you guys have those discussions on a one by one basis, or do you try to figure out what's the average best pospority tree and go about it that way, how do you guys do it?
So we'll, we'll figure that out and provide recommendations to the council as far as what we should do for trees, like I said, I wasn't expecting the amount of responses for in regards to the trees, so we'll provide that information to you guys, as the council and the state, I think, to see.
Yeah, so you want us to just table this for now, or what would you like us to do?
There was no action needed from the city tonight.
Yeah, because it's mentioned as action on there, that's why I'm asking. Okay. Do you want to just do the status update then, we'll just.
I'd just like to maybe make a couple comments or thoughts, I did, I did read all the information that we have, um I think we probably can all agree that trees are very important to homeowners, mature or whatever size, I think they add it's gonna be the only barrier that they'll have to the vastly increased noise and traffic on wall. And I think we absolutely need to recognize that the trees that they're losing are valuable, I figured it affects the saleability and the enjoyment of their properties, so that would be my, my thought. And thank you, Mike, for, okay, and thank you, Mike, for working with all the homeowners.
Okay, now the city has the tree ornaments which was city sponsored ones to appropriate that tree ornaments, and you can see that 66 is a, of course, but if I were done with that, it's almost a little, I mean, a mile or two away, but I think it adds to a nice cord over, for something to do with that, finding his trees right out of the chute and not relying on somebody else to find them as well, so.
Yep.
All right, so the update is concerned, the wall avenue east plans are both have been done, my plan was to bring them to you in the next meeting, and they have to be approved and then deliver the bits on the east side. I don't know if we'll be able to do that, depending on where the way we know situations are, or like the book on the list, we'll look at the timing of that, you know, how it has been good for three weeks, and then we usually have a weekend there to evaluate the bids, and then some three more directions, so there is some time, you know, where they have to, we can advertise it, prove it at the next meeting, advertise if you can get it, get it going, and we do have a period in there of when we can pull the bits, so that would be from the 117 to the bridge, the next one I'd like to be done very soon, after it's like, I mean, both or so afterward. And that one, what I think we're gonna end up doing, being that we added from the River's Edge West, I think we'll have, that would be two milestones. That first section, priority, we put on that to get from the bridge, the Lost River Road done, then if incidental stuff happened, that drags into the next year, and then that next portion of that, where it doesn't really affect anybody, because there's no driveways off of it.
Yeah.
Being Lost River Road, and the next one, we'll give them into next year to get that done, just because I don't think it does any good to try to hammer all that at once, when it does really affect anyone, they'll be able to come in and build and I can't really get a better bits, but it's something we kind of got to work through, we'll maybe, maybe it's gonna be awesome contract, to see if that is too much or if it isn't, but knowing that that priority is that Lost River Stretch, the 3D Bridge, and Lost River.
Yeah, because the other thing we're gonna watch too, is if we have to delay it by a year, the costs go up on it as well.
That's why I'd like to get it off under contract one year.
Right, right.
The time, you might get a contractor come in here and says, I need it all done in a year, fantastic, but I don't want to have them inflate everything.
Right, exactly.
Give them a little
Yeah, okay.
That's where, that's where we sit with those two. So action on that.
Right, anybody, any questions, more questions on that, alright, thanks, Jim. You got the next one, 66.
76,064 Avenue, this original estimate was done in about a year ago, February of 2022, I've obviously since then, cost has gone up. Yeah, I've gone through some public comment on this period through the design, and there's, that's began, and there's, instead of the shared use path on one side, and sidewalk on the other, it's shared use path on both sides, taking the comments from the neighbors, and utilizing that, the original engine report, yeah, roundabout proposal that Christianson intersection, but with the new Willow Grove, and the way everything finds out, that's maybe not gonna be a necessity, there was some potential for some goofy geometrics, as to how it was gonna come together, and now it seems to come together more as an intersection, so we can remove that and then update the cost estimate, so we don't get to the point where we do receive bids, we are too low when we, in the estimate, we have to roll off the region, but I want to make sure we have enough in there based on where we, I mean, we're, we're high, I think, in the estimate, but I'd rather be that way than another way, just because we saw what happened there, we bit it, had a little, so that kind of throw it out, got a higher estimate, we have to take it because like, in the report from being amended, so I wanted to get ahead of it with this one, and have it there some.
No, I agree, because otherwise, we don't want to go through the process again, delay this thing.
Don't want to show the cards.
Nope.
So, this is just, and I did send out, I thought about it this afternoon in my email, that somebody worked on the council a tiny year ago, maybe you didn't know what the original report was, so I sent that out this afternoon, this just so you had it, but the main thing was the cost estimate, which you had last, you're
Okay, thank you, I thought it looked similar, okay, makes sense.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
No, just a big thank you to Jim, I had all school questions on that one, but I just, it's awful, thank you so much.
Yeah, so, can I get somebody to do a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Stephanie does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Jimmy, you got the creek here too.
On the next one, Water Sewer and Street, Water Sewer, or the Street Improvement District number 2022-11, of Creek's second addition. This project was designed by the developer's engineer, not the city forest. Developer provided invoices for engineering of work, and would like to be reimbursed through the special assessment district. The design engineering includes preliminary engineering components, technical reports, manuals, plans, investigations. There's also included in these invoices was work for master planning, planning and product development, those costs could be reported by the developer, considering the cost of the state assessment district, because that's kind of a marketing or kind of a concept, which that isn't really integral to the plans and specs of that, so I went through and reviewed these, these invoices, and I provide, add some comments on which ones were to be, were to be taken out. I highlighted some of the people who just, you know, they have some project development, that's a good developer cost. There was a here, I have some preliminary planning, master planning. Very glad I think we had a master plan. This is something that the city's probably gonna have the biggest natural or most strict policy on, just going forward, but this hasn't been done yet, they'll make the addition and the paragons addition, so most of all this had, you know, they all sold their parts, sold their parts from the city project, from petition that was done by the city in the near future construction, so that one, the coster involved in, but the developer has the planning concepts and, and all that, they, they keep themselves, that's kind of where that precedence was set, so.
Maybe this is a really dumb question, but I'm not really understanding that, because I, and forgive me for my stupidity, but I thought that the whole reason that we have special assessments, it was because I thought council members had mentioned that we would be in charge of all of those things, and we wouldn't be allowing
That's where this, where we should have all seen, we should have pulled it.
Because if we're, if it doesn't matter, and they're doing their own thing anyways, then I guess I'm a little confused on why we
So typically, there's a kickoff meeting as part of the 25, 50, 75%, 100% review, and this one has gone through both reviews, and we have another review for River's Edge second Wednesday of this week, so there has been city involvement in it, there have been some in the past where there've been maybe less city involvement, and we're looking to correct that.
Like you get what I'm saying, right, because, I mean, from my understanding, I thought, well, we have to special assess, and we have to do all of those things, because that way we're, we're more involved with how things are, are done in the backend, and so if we're not really, then that, that was a comment that was made, so I just wanted to understand why we
I, I think she's misunderstanding.
That's what I'm saying, it could be really stupid that I'm not understanding.
City council authorized developer engineer to collect design engineering fees for the developments.
Provided that they met certain city requirements.
Yes.
As long as the engineer has review of the, the designer.
So, I want to figure back out what you're saying right there, based on that, Jimmy, you're still having to go through all these.
Yep.
Finding their mistakes, where they're, I don't want to say deliberately or non-deliberately putting stuff in there, I'm not sure how many hours it takes you to go through all this, are we billing them back?
Yes.
For hours you're spending?
Yes.
Removing stuff out?
That's good.
All the review time, because, well, project manager, public works, and I, they've been doing the reviews, and I know that asking questions, and we'll go through it and provide comments back, so some of them go pretty smooth, and I love to comment, but the ones we've had spent a lot, a lot of time on comments, so.
And those get billed back to, okay.
I keep track of all.
Thank you.
I think what you might be thinking about is some of the prior developments
Yeah.
along the goal, maybe not seeming that long ago, but prior to our time, where developers did some things on there.
Yes.
And there were some huge discrepancies, that's not the case.
See.
That now, we've taken that policy.
I know where you're talking about.
Yeah, it just confused me, so I was like, gosh, okay.
Okay. And I have no problem paying a reimbursement, provided there are parameters that they follow that fall within city guidelines, so that everybody's held at the same standard, I think that may be where, with this, and Jim are referencing, that we may need to tighten this up just a little bit.
Okay.
Is it in it to develop on cost by
Right.
Is that it, just it's tied back into the building?
Yep.
So then there are office, so when they're special for the time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions on the engineering invoices? I'm gonna look for a motion to accept them.
I'll make that motion this time, I don't have any issues with what I said, this one.
Yeah.
Included, yeah, ensuring that the comments provided are included with the motion.
Yeah, Sarah made that motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Jeff does a second, okay, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, alright. CIP, Brenton, go.
I've been looking at two options, and how to more cleanly reflect the capital improvements program, and we've worked on one on and off internally, using spreadsheets or access databases and different tools out there. Or we found that, we did some demos for different software programs to see what they cost, what they entail. Could they reflect reports better for us, or reflect information to the public better? We did demo two different ones, one was a software company, it was basically a one person show, and we're going, our concerns were, it's a one person company, if something happened, then we're stuck. The other thing was that software was basically, they took the Microsoft Access Database, and really fixed it up, pretty nice, but it was just a lot more cumbersome and not as reflective, like user friendly for the public, the other one we looked at was called Easy CIP. That software costs $3,000 annually, when you compare like different softwares that we have, staff wise, for like CAD or mapping or different things like that. It actually isn't all that expensive compared to some of those other ones that we use. But what this one would do is, it's a lot, it's a cloud based program, interacts more on websites, so you can reflect your data more interactively on the website, and then tie it back to your own website. So it's not just a lot more user, and go on, bring this up for council, if you have questions or concerns about having a CIP software. If you have questions or concerns about having a CIP software and. All we pay for it is that price split costly between the water fund, sewer fund and general fund. Uh, highway fund is helped out by the general fund anyway, so that's why general fund is instead of highway. But that's primarily where our projects are. Contailed from, so. Uh, what we'd like to do is do important with the C C CIP. Uh, that includes three licenses, so three users internally where they can go update the data. And then the overall software license is twenty-five hundred, so this would be an angle. Like I said, overall, when you compare it to other software programs. It's. Not extremely expensive compared to. Like say like our accounting software or CAD or. History mapping software, things like that, so.
So. Based on what you're showing right there, they only get one training session? Not unlimited training like Black Mountain?
They, the main training, they work with you is pretty user-friendly, like it's not a real complex software. Um, also, I believe Matt, have you put it on with an R and B, you've been given a proof. Proof of concept.
We have a proof of company environment going, uh, the gentleman is. Would be our account manager. That he only puts one session of train, the trainer session on here. Uh, but uh, they would throw it off if we had a question. The big tipping point of this versus the other one, in addition to having a team looking at it versus one person. Is that it's highly customizable, so if there's something that we wanna add or change.
Has anyone on this council seen the current capital improvement plan spreadsheet? Brenton, have you shared that with anyone?
We, we really have more issues.
It is a draft, but it is robust and really impossible to keep up on, so.
And that's why I stress this.
Right.
We don't have anything finalized, anything approved by the council. Um, it's really cumbersome.
Unbelievably cumbersome to follow and to try to add to or subtract from, or if you do projects and phases or parcels. Uh, trying to track that and then trying to get the communication to the necessary parties. Following that particular draft is cumbersome at best. Um, a, a simple solution like this for pennies on the dollar really makes sense as our city grows. Uh, but I'll leave that up to what the rest of the council.
Well, I would agree, I, I struggle trying to keep up on. All of the projects as it is, so I think it would be beneficial not only for the staff but for council to keep.
But I, I don't wanna convolute it, but I do wanna point out another benefit of this is. We'd be able to also account for like equipment and vehicle replacement within this also. That was something that we brought up with the company too, was can you reflect that in there and.
It has fleet capabilities?
It, well, you could reflect it within that CIP and there's some ways we can work with it to where we could reflect. The equipment replacement, so. It isn't a equipment replacement software just for that, it's a CIP, but we could account for some of that too.
I think it'll help with transparency, what do you guys think?
We gotta do something more than what we currently got into that.
I guess I, I would defer to who has done the research on, on the. On the software, but I think it's. It's very important that we and the residents understand what our projects are, what the priorities of the projects are and what they cost. Um, so we have a financial plan going forward, so I guess I would defer to the research that's been done as to what is the best uh. Way to accomplish that.
So, question, um. You split out administrators and user licenses, one user license. I mean, only one other person can go and view the data?
No, uh, we have unlimited guest access.
Okay.
You all will be able to.
Who owns the data? Do we own our own data, do we have access to our own data or not? Or what's up in that cloud software? It's, we have to go through them.
What you're saying is they reflect a lot of this stuff into, it's based off of like sales spreadsheets and things like that, but we don't. They kick it out for us into like the overall spreadsheet if we needed it.
Let me ask, are you thinking if this has to be expanded or expounded upon in the future?
Yeah, so in the future, let's say this isn't the solution that we need. How do you get your data out, is kind of the way I'm getting.
You can export it to a spreadsheet or something, yeah.
So like, good point.
Uh, this company does have quite a few. Different companies also that they're working with. So we need to look for, both of the companies look at, they work with any other cities. Um. This one was a little bit more across the country or different cities and counties across the country, where the one we were, the other one we looked at was.
A lot of west coast.
Well, that's one, west coast, but they have cities all over. Uh, the other one was heavier Minnesota based, cuz the company is based on Minnesota. But like I said, that was all Microsoft Access and it's a lot more cumbersome, if you don't know how to work with Access, it's a little more difficult to work with, so.
Okay, any other questions here, guys? I think you guys did your research on this one, so I'd be looking for a motion to accept the plan. Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, you want me to do the second? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries. Okay, Jim.
So the first one is shared use path, shared use path phase three, that's from around about the. The third avenue. Third Avenue, uh, that was submitted to the DOT on Friday, that's on the big wedding. We're having the mobile on the same um, timeframe as that one is on Friday. This will be received and tell people, or they will call for things from the people. High grade. Sixty-sixth street bit opening is this Thursday, send out a link to do that one online to anyone that's interested, anybody interested, uh, I'll send you. Anybody else wanna link to the opening on that one? If still loving, you know. Virtually, I believe it's two o'clock, I'm trying to save something to submit, so. I have those bids reviewed and then I have a recommendation to you next meeting.
Jim, just send me all bit openings, once you know that.
Yeah. Uh, sixty-third street is a seventy-five percent plan, plan phase, I mean, I did come through. So one hundred fifty percent plans with uh, Bull and Ham. Just a couple of things there, we've got all that ions that we've got.
Oh, we got that all finalized now?
Not final, but pretty well.
Looking good.
Yeah.
Nice.
Uh, meter vaults, we reached out to by key gun, maybe remember the meter vault is in the west side, listen, peace lot yard. Um, they reached out last week about having a meeting on the week of the twentieth, they wanna get to that in March. So they want the campaign of a re-kickoff meeting, I guess, if you can call it that, uh, week of the twentieth. In uh, just to kind of get an idea of.
Have them send us a picture so we make sure you're still there. Just saying.
It's the Rivers Edge second edition, we have a finer view on Wednesday, so.
Some questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Alright, Brenton, you're up. What? Wow, okay. Okay, portfolio reports mine, let's see, last Wednesday I met with the Realtor group called Rome. Pretty much represented some, pretty much all the different agencies. We usually have a yearly meeting with them, it just happened to be again in January, so had a good conversation with them. Uh, Thursday, last Thursday, had HBA annual meeting, all the mayors were there, we got to do our city presentations, that was kind of fun. Got that done, um. It's working on some bills with the, at the state level, so kind of looking at thirteen thirty. See where that one's gonna land, that's one we gotta pay a little bit more attention to here. Um, still things are up in the air with that, but we do continue to pay attention to that.
Do you know when that's getting built on?
Right off the top, I don't. Haven't looked, I didn't look last night, I should have. Yep.
With the due pass?
Yep, eleven to three due pass, so.
He says, that was the bill sponsor for the weekend, I haven't heard any update from that.
No.
Uh, to see if there can be an amendment to it. And we don't have the, the, the sound one, we heard one of, when it go to the House, we're involved.
Yeah.
The main concern is. Pay attention of the, at the senate level.
Yep.
But it, it did have a due pass eleven-three, but maybe it's my understanding.
Yeah, so it'll probably pass the House of them, but I'm guessing at this point we'll have to pay attention in the Senate when it goes crossover, I mean, I'm just. The prevailing winds. Yep, yep, get a hold of Greg, I've, I've talked to Greg about this, so, yeah.
And we don't know the timeframe yet.
As, we don't have a date yet, I haven't seen it on the, on the docket yet, but.
Typically, we do not have a lot of guns.
It's, you, you get about a forty-eight hour notice and that's about it.
It is disappointing, uh, it's a disappointing bill.
Yep. Um, I'm gonna be in Bismarck on the sixteenth and seventeenth, uh, the chamber is gonna be sponsoring some activities out there, we'll get a chance to meet with some of our representatives. On some of these different topics that we've been talking about, so I fear this would be a good time to go out there, so I will go out and see what we can do on some of the stuff. Um, the other thing I was gonna bring up tonight, um. I'm thinking about trying to get back our economic development group, I think that's something that we need to get going on again, um, try and work on getting some. More businesses to start looking our way here a little bit. Um, something I remember, we did an Envision Horse. Uh, deal back in twenty-seventeen, and I know we came up with a list of like ten different things that we'd like to see in the town. And uh, one of them was a clinic, we got that, I know one, second number two thing was a Dairy Queen, got that. Um, and then there was some other stuff too that we had trying to chase and we got a lot of them, but we're still missing a couple of things. I know one of the other things that there are a couple of the things, one was a hardware store and a grocery store, those are the two things that were kind of. On that list that people are looking at, so I'd kind of like to get back together with this uh. Economic Development Group, we had a pretty good group last time, I'd kind of like to try and reconstitute that and see if we can start doing some more push to get some of these uh. Different things in town that would help our groups, um, I don't know, it just seems like something that we need to be doing, so. I don't know. What do you guys think, you got some different ones that we need to go chasing after, Sarah?
Oh, I would add to that list, uh, veterinary clinic, a lot of people dive up into Fargo for veterinary services.
Yep.
Um, the pharmacy we just got, so that was a big one on my list, uh, and a restaurant, I, I, I know. We have a wonderful uh, establishment here with bigger, but I would love to see. Um, something outside of just fast food, like a family restaurant, so it's a place that people can go with children.
Yeah, that's good.
Really, really, those are the, my top.
Cool.
Additions.
Naomi, what do you got?
Veterinary clinic would be really cool.
Okay. Any others?
Well, don't put me on the spot.
I'm putting everybody on the spot. Stephanie, what do you think, you got one that you wanna chase?
Haven't, I guess I, um, I wasn't aware that we had an economic development committee.
At one time we did.
Okay.
We used to, we did not.
Nope, we don't right now, that's what I mean, I'm gonna try and bring that back. Jeff?
Uh, after having a birthday party this weekend for an eight-year-old, um. We are definitely lacking some, some sort of indoor activity venue. Uh, Skyzone was absolute nightmare this. It was like Chuck E. Cheese.
Dude, I feel for you, I feel for you, right, yeah. Well, okay, anyway, I just was curious, cuz I, I do wanna, like I said, I want to try and bring this back again, give us some ideas here and then go back to what we did in the Envision Horse thing and maybe. Look at what we can chase after, so. That's my quest, okay, I'm done, Sarah, what do you got?
Well, uh, a, as Jim was stating earlier, uh, bidding season is firing up, so we're gonna be very busy with the. Uh, large capital projects, one of which comes to fruition this Thursday. Uh, first portion of Wall Avenue in another month, second portion, another month after that, and then obviously keeping up on infrastructure. Uh, within this town is a full-time job in itself, so, uh, I don't have any further updates because that's been consuming all.
Okay, sounds good, Naomi, what do you got?
I don't really have much, I met with Jace. Was it Thursday, Friday, some, some week, I don't know. But just, um, we just continue to meet, um, as we can, pretty much over my lunch breaks and kind of discuss. The ongoing. Movement in town and, um, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay.
Um, I don't know much either, we still are working and having many meetings about the hundred and fiftieth celebration coming up in August. Um, as we continue to plan for the four-day event.
Okay, sounds good, Jeff?
Um, the only thing I got for uh, today was. Executive Council for MetroCog met today, um, they are looking to fill uh, Mrs. Gray's position. Uh, as she is retiring and um, they will be hosting interviews starting. Uh, sometime in the next couple of weeks, uh, if it is when I'm done on vacation, Brenton, I'll look to you to see if you can fill or. Somebody else can do the uh, fun job of interviewing people. Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, sounds good, I got one last thing I forgot to mention, um, Russ Zar wound up in the hospital here the other day. You know, a little bad case of the flu, so got a little bit more serious, so just everybody kind of keep him in your purse tonight too, I think he'll be out. Either hopefully tomorrow, it sounds, so, anyway, that's all I've got, so the next thing we have on our list here is the executive session. So Lucas, you want me to read through that? Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session, he'll pursue it to uh, NDCC four-four dash oh four dash nineteen point one nine. To discuss negotiating strategy or provide negotiating instructions. To its attorney and other negotiation regarding a contract for the purchase of real. Property related to the BNN NSF Railroad property. So without, what that means is we're gonna have to clear the room, cuz we do go into executive session, which is the council. Here, so I'll, we'll take a five-minute break here while that happens. Yep, David. Okay, motion.